We can remove that to the springtime. I don't know if we can move it right now or table it when it comes due, whatever the board's like to do on that.
Let's remove it. So it's not hanging around.
Take move letter E, please. And then, does anybody have a copy of the 2014 meeting schedule under new business number F?
Yes, I believe I do.
Copy there. Jeanette, you want to make the copy? Does everybody have a copy?
Yep.
One copy.
We can share it, share it. Karen.
Okay.
Either way, I'm sure we can look at it.
That's fine. Yeah, never mind, Jeanette. Any other additions or deletions?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with removing the Township Parking Lot Traffic Sign Request.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments. Approval minutes 11:04, 2013.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:04, 2013 as printed.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. You know, and I'm wondering if we should still do this monthly because, Jeanette, we're never going to have these on time, are we? Because of them gathering the data. So I don't know how we want to continue with this for the future.
Well, we're not even getting them, so are you getting them late?
They come late and they're sporadic and it's...
Because we can always...
Do you want to do a quarterly report or something like that?
We could always be just a month behind on, you know.
Yeah, most of the time we don't have two or three months.
Yes. How about when we don't have them at that time, we'll just announce to be received and go forward from that point. Does anybody have a problem with that? Because we're at the mercy of obtaining them through them, so. Actually, we'll place a call and hopefully at the latest, we won't receive it later than two months. Because it is valuable information. They are going to give us updates of emergency beyond the lookouts and stuff like that, or press releases. They're supposed to release them to us as quick as possible. So sheriff's report to be received. Fire Department report, chief.
Just one item to note. You've got, you all have received my report for the month. Please note the total number of runs for the month of November. We had 61 runs for the month of November. An average month up until two years ago was 30 to 32 runs. We did have a windstorm that passed through here on November 17th, and on that day alone, we responded to 17 calls. But that's an unbelievable total and our year-end totals will be blown out of the water as well because we've been averaging 5 to 10% above all year long over last year, which was a record year. So that was the only thing I wanted to point out to the board and to everybody in the audience. Otherwise, you can receive and file.
Thank you, sir. EMS report. Anybody here from Jeff White?
No.
All right. Did I pass him?
No, he did. I have two months worth from him.
Okay. Do you want to wait till the end to see if he shows up? If not, we'll receive and file? Or would you like to present?
Received and filed.
Okay, thank you. DPW report.
Good evening. Everybody should have a copy of this month's report. I said you receive and file. Anybody should have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Code enforcement report.
I have the Michigan Light Control Commission reports. Is it a file?
Thank you. Any other questions regarding code enforcement? Sessions Department report. It's my chance.
Good evening, sir. If there's any questions, I'll answer them. If not, I just ask that you receive and file.
Questions?
Tom and I talked for a while, so I don't have any questions.
Okay. And we'll get to another subject shortly here in our agenda. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Safe.
Good evening. You all have my report. If any questions, otherwise, receive and file. And I just want to mention that the Saw Grant application was hand-delivered today at Lansing. And I have two copies, one for the clerk and one for the supervisor's office. Any questions? Again, I'll ask for receiving file, please.
Is that the one that's 55 pages?
Yes.
I just did a couple of them there and I'm sure they're going to have copies of that.
I normally provide the supervisor and the clerk with copies. If anybody else would like a hard copy, just let me know.
As long as we know they got them, that's fine.
Any questions? Library report.
The only thing I want to mention on the library report is that on Saturday, December 14th at 10:30, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be visiting the library. Other than that, receiving file.
That starts at 10:30? At 10:30 a.m.? No idea how long that goes to, probably noon or so. If you imagine, if you had to guess how long that goes to.
Probably. Says that they're going to take pictures and they're going to be visiting. And they're going to read the story, so.
Any questions regarding senior center? No questions. Supervisor's report. Once again, I'd like to bring to everybody's attention the Fifth Annual Community Dinner in Haven-Lennox Township, Family, Friends Food Fellowship, Friday, December 6th, this Friday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the New Haven High School. Just like it's been. Anybody who would like to volunteer or cook anything, please contact supervisor's office. If not, look forward to seeing you there. Also, my ticket. Jeanette, do you have the email regarding the tickets? Cost of the tickets for the code enforcement? Okay, thank you. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that I am going to submit that for printing based on Chuck Snell's recommendation, I believe your recommendation too, Mr. Jopik?
Yes, it is.
There was two ways to have that printed. One was for 1,000 copies, one was 500. We, I think all agree that we'll not exceed the 500. That should last us quite some time. There's no need for the extra expenses on the 1,000. And this ticket, the way it's printed, is basically a coverall. Should address any situation that we'd have, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I'm trying to look up the email from Mr. Snell as well here.
I think, yeah, it was on the desk. I think she just...
I have it here. For 500, $674.19 for 500 citations.
600 and...
$674.19 for a book of 1,000 citations, $744.30. There is a $70 one-time layout fee as well.
If the board would rather have me do the 1,000, I don't see us writing 1,000 tickets. I don't see us writing 500 tickets. I mean...
Things change too and might have to update them or so.
Yeah, like go with the lower expense, I believe. So. That is going to be taking place for enforcement purposes. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. I have nothing further.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchie. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Orders and bills.
One bill was removed. So the new amount to approve is 213,155.37.
213,155.37. Thank you. We got Jeanette. Thank you. We'll need the hard copies.
Changed, Jeanette. What'd you change?
I took out that 22. The Bluewater Tire.
Line item number, page, page number, line item number, it's gone.
My number, number seven was taken out.
Bluewater Tire, okay.
Number third page.
Number seven.
Here's the... Any other questions regarding orders and bills?
Make a motion to approve the orders and bills. Oh, I'm sorry, with a total, at a total of 213,155.37.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Churchie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Patton, Dr.?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trumbull?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees' report, trustee Churchie, please.
I just want to remind you about, Ron talked about the community dinner. Entrance fee, so to speak, is a donation to the food pantry. Trying to restock shelves there. Other than that, Planning Commission level was still working on the recreation plan. If you haven't and you can, fill out one of the surveys, either online or on paper. We're going to move as fast as we can on this so that we're ready to apply for grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Clerk's report?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Township Policy and Guideline Manual.
I'll receive and file.
Appreciate it, thank you. Support. Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Township Policy and Guidelines Manual.
If the last, we talked about this, we were waiting until January?
Correct. I believe I have written it down per law on the 15th or the 22nd. Then, you want to just address it at the January meeting again?
Yeah, either one of those days would still give us two weeks.
Yep, notice. I think you just make a note of this at this time, we're written out of the 15th or the 22nd. That was based on our information and that should still give her enough time, wouldn't you think?
If it's the first meeting in January, this is it. I'll ask her to keep those two dates open.
Thank you, sir.
Don't keep the 27th open, we have a planning permission waiting.
So just the 15th?
I thought just the 22nd.
15th to 22nd.
15 and 22. Okay, these are Wednesdays.
So we need a motion to table it?
Sure.
Make a motion to table Township Policy and Guideline Manual until the January meeting.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Write them tabled. Finished business, Planning Commission appointment.
Well, I think there was a...
Would you like to explain it, sir?
Well, clerk Keith asked if there's a need to rescind the prior motion. I believe the prior motion was made contention upon receiving a legal opinion. And if based upon that legal opinion, it's the decision to not proceed forward with that appointment, then the proper action would be to open the matter for reconsideration and to decide whether or not to rescind it. There will be two actions. One to reopen the matter, to reconsider it, and the second one to decide whether or not to reconsider or rescind it.
Can you explain the motion to reopen?
Yes. A motion is, it's actually a motion to reconsider a prior action of the board.
Okay.
And it would need to be made by the board, would need to be seconded, would need to be decided upon. Once that, if that passes, then the matter would proceed to a motion to, well, if a motion were made, one possible motion is a motion to reconsider. Again, it would need to be seconded and it would need to be voted upon after deliberation.
So the first motion has to be to reopen for consideration?
To reconsider a motion that was made previously. That would be the first motion.
Okay, so move it.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchie. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. You're saying there's not have to be a second part of that or...
Well, that is up to the board. One possibility is that there is a motion to rescind the appointment. And if that's seconded and discussed and decided upon.
Would that have to be made by the person who made the motion?
No, it would need to be made by somebody in the majority decision. If I recall correctly, I think it was a quarter one vote.
Can I actually take this one and question animals?
For planning commission.
Oh, yeah, planning commission was again missing.
So that stays in effect then? The letters?
If there's no motion to reconsider, that motion does stay in effect. That decision, that prior decision of the board stays in effect.
I'll make a motion to rescind my motion from Monday, November 4th, 2013, to appoint Jerry Jeanette to the planning commission.
That be the proper way? I'll make sure we're doing it by the... I'll support it.
Motion by trustee Churchie, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other discussion? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm lost. I thought you appointed Jerry last month.
I did. They, then they voted to approve it?
Yeah.
And then they voted not to. And what Mr. Jopik's saying is that you're not allowed to do that, correct?
Yes.
No.
I thought you said they cannot remove him. One of the questions was removing him from the ZBA.
Yeah, she's asking what happened last month.
Right, this, that was regarding removal from the ZBA, and that would be inappropriate. What this relates to is the appointment that was made at the last meeting regarding the planning commission.
And that was based on why they were going to accept him for the planning commission? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes. If I recall correctly, it was made subject to an opinion from my office concerning this matter and the matter to be brought back.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
I'm still lost.
Would you, before we go forward, would you like to explain it one more time?
Sir, at the last meeting, the board decided to appoint Mr. Jeanette to the planning commission. And that appointment was made subject to receiving an opinion from my office as to questions regarding whether there could be two planning commission members appointed to the zoning board of appeals. And I rendered an opinion, and I won't get into all the specifics as part of communication with the township board, but basically, my conclusion and opinion in the matter is that the, neither the zoning ordinance nor the state law regarding zoning boards of appeals would be, would allow for that. They allow for one planning commission member to be on the zoning board of appeals, not two. And I rendered that opinion to the board with some reasoning and some legal basis behind it. And the board has that and is based upon that opinion, is deciding to, in fact, reconsider the prior appointment, which it has done. It has brought it back to itself to reconsider it. And as part of that reconsideration, it has decisions that it could make to amend the prior appointment, to affirm the prior appointment, or to rescind the prior appointment. A motion has been made at this point to rescind the prior appointment. I believe it's been seconded and now it's under discussion by the board.
The other part of it, Peggy, was that we wanted to put Chuck Strummer on the ZBA because of his experience and take Jerry off of there, but we're not allowed to unless it's for malfeasance or, you know, a few other things. We can't just remove him from the ZBA and put him on the planning commission.
Right, and the ZBA bylaws, there can only be one member from the planning commission.
That's what he also said, so we can't hit, can't do that now.
Now Jerry Jeanette could resign from the ZBA. He could resign.
Yeah, right.
From the ZBA, if he wanted to be on the planning commission.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Now we're back to appointment, correct? I would like to appoint Mr. Jeanette to the planning commission.
I would like to ask Mr. Jeanette if he would like to resign from the ZBA. Phone to him. Unfortunately, he's not here. I'd like to make a motion that we table the planning commission appointment in order to talk to Mr. Jeanette about what his thoughts are.
Support. Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions or discussion? I have, I do have one question here. Mr. Jopik, are you saying he could serve on both?
If he were the liaison...
He could serve on both, correct?
The ZBA, he could serve on both.
All right. That's my question. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Zoning Board of Appeals Appointment.
I'd like to appoint Chuck Strummer to the zoning board of appeals appointment.
We have to wait to see if...
Jeanette, she's...
He's not on the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, that's right. I'm sorry. I was thinking the other, the other way around.
And he did submit a letter stating that he was interested in being on the zoning board of appeals? Yes.
But we don't know if we're going to still have, what we're going to do with Jeanette, so we might have to table this one too until we get...
No, we can appoint him. And then he would just be the liaison, because he'd be on both.
Oh, okay, that's true.
Then if Mr. Strummer wants to be on the planning commission, he can still do that.
I'll support that.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchie. Any questions or discussion? I, myself, I'm just going to voice my opinion. I don't believe he is the right person to be the liaison. And if anybody would like to have a meeting with me to discuss my reasons, I'd be happy to do so. I do not believe he's the person to be the liaison. And I'll be happy to have any dialogue with anybody. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Nay. Motion carries. Pre-application review fee schedule.
If the board would like to reconsider a prior action on its agenda, I can do that.
But do you want to discuss it with him in private instead of...
Mr. Jopik.
Review, review fee schedule? Yes, I've provided to the board some materials. The board asked for some sample materials to be prepared. The board asked for some sample materials to be prepared. Assistant addressing the situation regarding pre-application reviews of, under the zoning ordinance, site plan reviews, things of that nature before a property owner applies or potential property owner formally applies for site plan review, PUD, or other type of reviews, special land use, whatnot. If they request some sort of pre-application meeting with the township engineer, planner, myself, township administration, all incurring some expenses and whatnot. Here, this is prepared in order to provide a mechanism by which the township, if it so desires, the board can adopt a resolution establishing fees related to those types of reviews. I've prepared a sample document for those purposes. It's all in draft form. I've just proposed what I've seen in some other communities. Other communities do various things. Some require a deposit of 100%, 125% of estimated costs, 150% of estimated costs. Other communities require a set dollar amount to be deposited. Others require pay after the meeting or event. There was discussion at the last meeting about perhaps if it's during office hours of the township engineer, where there is no added charge to the township, that that be allowed without charge. And same with the planner, if there's no charge, and so on and so forth. I provided that in the sample materials. I set it up to be a deposit that is held by the township before the meeting and used up through the course of the meeting. And if it's not all used, it gets returned to the property owner. Any balance that's not used based on the charges against the deposit are returned. And if it goes over, then the township can filter the overage or collect the overage before future meetings. Also, the property owner would have the option to apply it. If they do come in for a formal application, I put in there that any balance on that deposit could be applied to their, their formal application fees that are a separate fee. Now, the other thing that I addressed in the sample materials are, in the course of looking into this, with trustee Boyd and township staff and township engineer, some question about what the existing fees are, and I put in here a resolution format that would address all the different types of fees that would be charged by the township for various types of reviews that are undertaken by the township, its consultants, and its planning commission, and this board, and this ZBA. I don't have the dollar amounts for those. Those, that would take some consultation with your internal departments and your consultants to come up with a reasonable amount. Which one is a reasonable amount, of course? That's not to own as on property owners yet. Doesn't have taxpayer funds from the public at large paying for a single property owner to undertake these reviews. So that's the idea, come up with a dollar amount that's reasonable through the UCU resources to come up with that amount. So I've just put in links there for now, just to give the idea field where this resolu, this resolution establishing a schedule of fees would, what it would look like. And I presented that to you for some further discussion.
And you were, you were saying, when we were, when we were talking about this when we first started, in order to do the resolution, to have these fees, you have to have technically, or you recommend having a resolution on each of the fees. So that's the second page here, as a resolution for each fee.
That's exactly right. And in several locations in the zoning ordinance and other ordinances, there's references to schedules of fees.
And we have one for pretty much 2 through 12.
Well, that's good to hear.
So, you know, not exactly, but that stuff, site plan review and special land use and all that, that's all through the planning commission, and there are fees already there.
Okay, well, that would be worked into the schedule. If you want to adjust those fees, you could. And I can get a copy of that. I can use it and incorporate it in here.
I like where this is going. I don't think it's set yet. Now, I talked to Ron about when a developer comes in, in that first initial meeting, if it was the fire chief and the DPW and the planner, and one meeting is on us. But after that, then they have to start paying for, for our, our people. Because our people aren't doing it for free.
And I remember that discussion, and then part of that discussion was you'd have to put a time limit on that.
One to three hours.
Okay.
Which would be a morning or an afternoon.
That, because that one meeting could easily go eight hours.
No, I know, yeah. Either a morning meeting or an afternoon meeting.
You're here two hours? Or you're to one hour?
No, I'm here two hours.
Two hours on Wednesdays?
Okay. The meeting should be limited to one. That's what normally preapplication meetings are for, if they're covered by the township.
But I understand what he's talking about, preapplication.
Right.
In the real world, there's a lot of stuff that takes place prior to that. And I can tell you, I, I understand the reason for this, but I'm totally against it. And if we were in better times, I could, I could see it. But we have to be proactive in getting business right now into our community or, or building of that nature. We have to do whatever it takes. And we're going to be compared to other areas. It's, it's competition right now. If you're, if you're a developer, you're a businessman, it's a competition against other areas. And it's the path of least resistance. They're going to take the easiest route, trust me. I would, I don't know anybody else in business that would. They're going to go where people are most helpful, where it's most cost-effective. Path of least resistance. Trust me when I tell you. And, and these developers, they talk to each other. When this was brought up at the last supervisors' meeting, I, I told you the response I got. There was only one that said they charged. And that was Ray Township. And as you know, there's not a lot going on in Ray Township.
According to this paper that was in my box, I assume it came from your office, but I don't know about township fees. Richmond Township has a fee, Casco Township has a fee, Columbus Township has a fee. I don't know what they mean by future on this one. And the city actually.
If you have one form, it says St. Clair County, I can tell you. We're competing against Macomb County businesses and developers.
I would think we're competing against all Macombies. Why not bring everybody in? But everybody, the point is, the point is, other communities are charging.
And there's a lot that are.
I don't doubt that. Some can afford it. I just, my problem with it is I don't like the idea of the residents paying for people to come in here and fish around. It can get extremely expensive. And the, the Moochie group that was here last night is a perfect example. We spent a lot of money on them, and hopefully that will come through. What if it doesn't? The township residents spent a lot of money to bring them here.
I would encourage anybody to fish around in our township. We want to draw as much attention as we can. And you start charging people after one hour, I, I don't think that devolves growth or promotes growth. Any other input?
I would like to move forward on this resolution with changes. And like I said, I'm not completely against the first one being a pre. And nothing's free. I have nothing against the first one being on the township. Because our professionals have to charge. And even though Sermet says he doesn't charge, he does. You know, it's, it's there.
It's in the package. But he's here, so.
So I would like to move forward with this, not exactly like this. But I'd, I'd like to speak more to this.
But just for my clarification, what you're saying, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, is one, a person gets an hour, then after that, you're going to determine fees. We're going to give somebody one hour of our time now.
Well, I'm thinking Sermet's here for two hours. I'm thinking of two hours. Because we know he's going to be free, technically. He's, he's here anyway, so the rest of them are going to.
And two hours.
So we'll say two hours. And then after that, just like everybody else, it, I mean, why should the residents have to pay for everything? If a business wants to come here, then they need to invest in it. So after, after that, two hours, and, and Sermet said himself that generally two hours is going to answer enough questions. And he even said that if you offer stuff for free, they'll be digging and digging until everything's done and ready to go, and they haven't spent a penny. And they got everything done for free.
Have you seen some of the bills that these developers get by the time it's done there, it's not for free?
Well, I saw the bill that we paid for the Moochie brothers, and so far, we spent over $5,000 on them. And that's just in engineer fees, $5,000. We spent $2,000 on the golf course, and that fell through. That's $7,000 of taxpayers' money and nothing to show for it yet. $2,000 will never see anything for.
Trust me, that's a drop in the bucket.
That's $7,000. That's not a drop in the bucket.
I'll show you fees that have been incurred. That makes it a drop in the bucket on frivolous things.
And if a company like, like, and I, I agree with you, Rob, but if a company like the Moochie brothers, you can't tell me that if they're going to come here and spend $50 million, which is the number you put, and they put $50 million, they're going to balk at spending a couple thousand? If they are, then, I, I mean, do we really want them here?
They're going to make sure, they're going to make sure climate's right for doing business in that.
And they should.
That's what I can tell you, if they're going to spend that kind of money.
Sermet? Would two hours, the two hours that you're here, if we gave them the two hours, how much can a person usually get? Can you get a lot accomplished in those two hours? I mean, you've sat in on a lot of these things. What is your, your suggestion that two hours?
Two hours is a long time. And I typically carry all my info in my laptop, so I would be able to answer a lot of questions in those two hours. I don't charge for those two hours unless they are related to an existing project. Now, the two, these two big projects, because we went beyond the two-hour allocated every week. That's why I charge for it, because it was continuous. And that's why we're trying to avoid that right now. We don't want to tell them, come up for Wednesday, and, and engineer everything every, every, every week. But normally, developers, they don't have that time to come in on a certain date, on a certain time, just to get answers. They would like answers like on the spot. They're on the phone with their attorney, with the other consultants, and they want answers. And that's why, how we get roped into it. They, they want to know, what can we do here? What, can we extend the water on this side? Can we tap in this sort? And that's how we get involved. But two hours is a lot of time for somebody to get for free. And I, I suggest if, if myself would be available, I suggest everybody, all the consultants and other departments be available for the same amount. Because they will have a lot of questions, especially with the big development. They, they need a lot of answers upfront before they start investing. Normally with other communities, it's one hour preapplication meeting, and it's covered by the community. Because that will encourage people to come in. And then there's, the set fees start kicking in after that, if they're serious.
And I have to go back to that. Sorry to interrupt you, Sermet, but that's, the preapplications, once they determine they're coming here, what I'm getting at is there's so much before that. There, there, there's so many things to address before that. They might have an idea, and that gets changed 20 times before they realize what they can do in our community prior to coming to us.
Correct. And that's for a larger product. And the, these two are unique because they're so big. And they need answers. They need a lot of answers. So there, there will be a lot more time involved than just two hours.
And if we do all that for free, it's going to get quite expensive.
It will. Correct.
And that's the fear.
I mean, my recommendation is to go ahead with, with the resolution and the set fees. And the township board can waive anything later on. If there's a special case coming in, large development, or another government agency trying to get involved, then the board have all authority to waive any, any set fees. Am I correct, Attorney Joppick?
Go ahead.
Yes, technically, the board can waive fees. Just a note of caution, a waiver, repeated waivers can end up becoming rule as opposed to exemption. So a one-time waiver on a very occasional basis is legitimate. They do for a good reason. And, but consistency is also.
And then I'm going to warn you too, based on that scenario, Sermet. At what point during this initial talking do you say to that person, at this point, you're on the clock, and I don't know if I have to charge or not to see if it'll be waived by the board, so I want to let you know ahead of time, you could be receiving a bill from this point on? That gets in the way of dialogue sometimes.
It is challenging, but once you set the base with a resolution on set fees, and we always say the first two hours are free, then they know it's.
It's very clear. You, you set up a two-hour meeting. If they need to know more, you set up another meeting, you get your deposit, so that everything is covered.
Very clear.
I agree that we should go forward with this, because we have to put a stop to just keep putting out, putting out, putting out our services and not knowing what's going to happen. If a business wants to build somewhere, they do a lot of their own research. In comparison, residents also do. They decide what area they want to live in, and they start looking there. And I know it's a small thing compared to a big company, but that's basically what we did when we started looking. And we set parameters of the area, you know, between this railroad and that railroad, and between County Line and Romeo Plank. And we went to each township office. We got their maps. We mapped out where everything was and found, okay, the school system here, the prison's there, the landfill's there. And then we narrowed down where we were looking at and checked the services and everything. And that was all on our own, just like a business should do that on their own. We can't keep paying for them to do this. So yes, we need to go forward with it.
So the next step, Mr. Joppick, would be to, to set the fees in a motion? Would that be the, I would assume that'd be the, the big thing? Get our fees written on here and then make this an official ordinance?
Resolution. Yeah, at a, at a future meeting, a motion would be appropriate. This needs some work. And one of the questions that the board is looking to go for with this concept that I need in order to work this into a final draft, bring back to you, would be some of the questions that I raised in, in my comments in the margin. Primarily, well, one of the questions has been asked, answered, that there are some established fees. So I'll be able to fill in or hopefully work out 2 through 12 without too much trouble. But I may need to consult with the planner and engineer to round out those numbers and make sure we have them covered. But under the, the first section, these preapplication fees, one of the questions I have is, is the board interested in having a deposit upfront made by the person requesting these sorts of activities? Or is it something that the board wants to, or would feel comfortable charging and sending a bill for after the fact, knowing that there is the risk that you might never be able to collect it if they never.
I would think that it was, I would think we run a deposit, because if they decide not to build, they just walk away. Well, how would we ever get it from them? Potentially.
I'm looking for some guidance in that regard, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels in that regard.
Totally against it. Because trust me, you have two communities. One requires a deposit to talk to them, the other one doesn't. I'll talk to the other one, I build a relationship. My choice is going to be easy, if, if it's based on just who to work with. Just my opinion.
I agree with the first. We should talk about setting a deposit too. Because, like you said, after the fact, they'll just walk away and not, they'll say, why, why do I have to pay this bill?
And if I may, Mr. Sermet? The other part of that is, I, I've written it in this draft as a deposit of an estimated amount. The other option is a deposit of a set amount. And as I thought about this, just sitting here, listening to the discussion and Sermet and whatnot, it might be better to go with a set amount as opposed to an estimate. Because then you have questions of who establishes the estimate, and is it going to be arbitrary? If you have a set amount and you have provisions in here to collect more if there's a need for more, I think you're covered well enough. But then the question is coming up with the dollar amount. That is. That is something I think through some, if, if I'm gonna proceed with rounding this out, that I'd engage in some discussions with the consultants and administrators of the township to try and get a reasonable number to put in here for a starting deposit. And I could come back to the board with that, if, if that's the majority of the board's desire.
Any other discussion? I see the CASCOS got, already got their price at 275 at the office and 450. It says that client, so I'm assuming that's for them to go there, but those numbers are awful low. I mean, it seems like they go through that real fast. I mean, I don't know if that would cover much of anything.
Have you, I have one question. Has anybody noticed a lot of development in CASCOS?
Haven't noticed development anywhere lately in the last five, six years. Hasn't been anywhere. So you just need basically approval from the board to go ahead and talk to engineer, planner, and figure out?
Yes, if I, if I could get a motion from the board directing me to proceed to the next step of finalizing the draft resolution and schedule of fees, I will do so.
So moved.
To the board.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Safe.
Now, we still could put something in there such as two hours with each professional.
Yes, if that's, if that's the board's desire, we can work on this some more. I'll bring back a draft that could be adopted, but of course, if there's more discussion and more changes desired, certainly.
Because if you put something like that in there, it could always be taken out of the rest of the board as a group.
Yes.
And I'll get you a copy of that schedule. No action, terrible.
All set? Thank you. New business. Detroit Water and Service Department, DWSD water contract.
Hold on. What about our forward removed debt?
Yes.
I believe everybody received a copy of the, the amendment number two to the DWSD Detroit Water and Service Department, proposed contract, service contract between the city and Lennox Township. This is the second amendment. We, we had an approval back in '09, and then '08, and then '09, eh, in 2010, and this is the three-year mark. The next amendment we should be looking at is in five years from now. So this is the mark that already set up back in '08 to reopen and renegotiate the contract limits and the, the volume anticipated and the demand and all that, all those details. Now, Cam and I met with the DWSD guys and been in discussion with them for the last month. And we came into an agreement what the numbers should be as far as the limits on the pressure and the max dailies, max hours, and also the volume provided to the township. And the city has agreed to the numbers that we proposed, and they are reduced from the previous contract as far as max, maximum day and peak hour pressures and also the volume. And that would allow us to get a lower rate for the next five years. However, I think as you all know, that DWSD rates are always in, in the incline, so maybe next year we'll have a wash with no, no changes to our rate. Again, we reviewed all, all the numbers, we reviewed the language, and I believe the attorney looked at the language. This is a typical standard contract, and all the communities have the same language. And we are here to recommend moving forward with this contract.
Okay, thank you. It's both years' recommendation. Attorney Joppik, you have no problems with this?
I do not.
Thank you. Any questions?
You said that we're actually lowering the, our demand, I mean, basically?
Yes.
If, if grasshopper takes off and we need more water, is it real tough to get that volume back up? It's easy enough to do?
Normally, it would be subject to a penalty, but we, we told them right now, we have no forecast, we have no big development coming in the next five years, we don't have any plans for any big expansion. So what if that scenario happens? And they were, they were open when, when something like that comes in, as soon, as long as we notify them in advance not to just suddenly double our rates, demand, they're okay with, with modification to the contract. So we will, most likely, we're not gonna get penalized for that.
And I think my bigger fear is if we give that away and another community takes that, and now they don't have capacity for it, can we lose that way?
We don't. This is water, not sewer.
Totally different.
Totally different.
Okay, yes. Well, I'm thinking either way.
No.
Either end, I'm just, you know, sometimes we can give stuff away, you can't get it back.
Yeah, no, we block the city into supplying what we need.
Right.
And also for the pressures, they guaranteed us that, what the system needs. There is no deviation from that. So we didn't give out anything. We just negotiated the maximum limits where if you exceed, then you pay a penalty.
Okay.
We'll lower those to get a better rate.
Gotcha. It just clicked. Gotcha.
And our, our water management program is really coming to play with that with the off-peak pumping and working with the, our customers, correct?
Oh, according to the data, once we were able to get those controls in place, we even got accolades from the DWSD ring team at how we were able to flatten out and what we were able to do in such a short period of time.
And that, just so everybody understands, what we look for is consistency, so they can gauge our rates so there's not huge spikes where it can charge us more money. Am I correct in saying that?
That is correct, especially during what they call peak hours, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. The higher demand that you put on the system, the higher the rate that you're gonna pay. The off-peak hours, midnight to 4:00 AM, they don't really penalize you how much you pump during those hours, because they realize everybody has to refill the reservoirs at some time.
That's when we'd like our maximum usages late at night and during those hours. The loss at our peak.
Right.
Costs, so. Just for example, like the prison is one of our largest customers, get them to fill their.
Reservoir.
Water at, at night. I think we have them, I forget what time.
Uh, 12 to 4.
12 to 4. Any other questions?
I make a motion to, to accept the amendment number two to water service contract between the city of Detroit and Lennox Township as presented.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. All those in favor? Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. This is a fairly formal process that the DWSD may require a copy of the minutes to be provided, and so if the maker of the motion could include authorization for the township supervisor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Mr. Safe, you also have something?
Yeah, normally they would ask for a resolution to adopt this contract, but we were able to, you know, talk to them. They will accept a certification letter by the clerk, and I believe Cam forwarded that letter to you, Jody. If the clerk certified that this contract was approved tonight, then they will accept that moving forward.
Thank you.
We don't need a formal resolution or copies of the minutes.
Okay. How did you want that worded?
Include an authorization for the supervisor and clerk to execute the contract.
So moved.
Thank you.
Does this court?
I support.
You support. Thank you very much. Motion once again by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Chemical treatment service renewal.
As all of you are aware, since we've occupied this building with the geothermal system, we've had to contract our glycol testing to H.B. Burton Company. That has always been on a yearly basis, and it always seems like it stinks up on us and how fast the years come around. Price has not increased at all, but we are asking that we do a multiple-year renewal with Burton. Burton's done a great job for us in the past. They're willing to keep their price the same for, I believe, three years. Is that correct?
We really don't have a lot of choices with.
No, there's not a lot of companies out there that do this.
Yeah.
And again, they're big in the area, they, they do a lot of this type of testing, and they have not, they've done us right so far.
You've never seen a decline in cost?
No, it's always stayed the same.
So what, basically what, in a summary, if we can keep it the same for three years?
And it just eliminates.
Yep.
This coming around so quickly.
Thank you. Any questions?
So this is basically, they come in and look at the system and make sure, because this is saying there's, if there's gonna be any chemicals, that's an additional charge. So what, what exactly are we paying for?
Basically, the testing of the glycol, which is the fluid that runs through the geothermal that transfers the heat from the ground to the heat pumps.
And that something has to be done every year?
You should, if you want your system to work right.
We do.
Because that's the only way you're gonna be able to determine if something's going wrong. And if you determine something's going wrong, you put the proper additive in to counter react it. No more, no difference than if you get a virus with medication.
Now, they're saying here that they do this three times a year?
They do three inspections a year.
Okay.
And when they come in and test the wa, the fluid, they take it with them, run it through some tests, give us a report.
That, for that, three times a year, they were charging us $350.
That's correct.
And now they wanted, you want a three-year agreement at $1,000.
We say $150.
I'm just curious, Cam, it is just curiosity, have you ever had a change out? Has there been a problem until we get?
No. No. As long as the system stays tight, you know, as far as no leaks and, or issues, we should be good for part of that. But without the proper testing and, and maintenance, that could change.
You just miss that one issue and it gets very expensive. I'll make a motion to approve the three-year contract with H.B. Burton Company for chemical treatment service renewal at the cost of $1,000.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personal property statements and mailing for 2014 assessment rule request. Mr. Ron Che.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to explain?
Quick summary, sir.
In essence, what I'm asking for is approval for my recommendation of using KCI, it's a vendor, to create, fold stuff, put meter postage for the 2014 personal property statements. The vendor would receive an electronic file from me, create those documents, and deliver them to the post office. I've gotten two bids, one from the other, the other vendor was much more expensive. I do have extensive experience using KCI for this task in the past, and the end amount is unknown due to the fact that we haven't finished the canvas of the new businesses and which businesses have removed, excuse me, gone out of business from the community. Once we know that, we'll have a better idea of what the actual end cost is. So if I could, I'd ask to have approval of up to $250.
Are these companies like KCI, are they, I don't know if they were, were just bonded or insured, are they, they're not gonna release any of that information to other parties?
That's correct. To my knowledge, they're not bonded, but I've never had any instance of anything being released to a third party.
Use it before in other communities?
Yes. Yes, for probably the last eight years.
KCI has contacted me quite often. Every year I get a packet from them because they do tax bills also. And I've thought about using them. We do it in-house here, but I, I really don't know if it is cheaper or not. But basically, Tom is asking for ahead of time is his postage, right?
Well, that would be, that would be standard for any job, so I didn't really include that. That was part of the two vendors' estimates. One I agree with, one I, I'm not so keen on.
Right.
But the postage is gonna be the same regardless of how we owe.
Who does it?
So.
So what you need upfront is?
The approval to use KCI for an amount up to $250.
Because he doesn't know how many parcels he has.
Right.
Make a motion that we approve the use of KCI for the assessing department's personal property tax statements.
Let's support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Health insurance renewal. Good evening, Janet. I, I can tell you, this is a result of a lot of going back and forth with Mr. Bonmerito, and I can tell you there is still a lot of confusion in the medical coverage plans with his company. There was talk that people could keep their same plans in place. We're being told that's not so. We asked Mr. Bonmerito what would be the closest comparison to what we have now. His recommendations given here, and Janet, if you'd like to take it further than that on the dialogue we had with that gentleman?
Sure. Our current plan is, like Ron said, is not available anymore. The renewal is the platinum, is, do you want me to go all the way through it? It lowers our office visits, it lowers our in-house and network deductible. The co-insurance is a little bit lower, or actually higher, it's gone from 100% to 80% until you meet your deductible and your maximum out-of-pocket deductible. So for like a single person, they would have to have a $500 deductible and then the 1,500 on top of that deductible. Once they meet that, all their bills, all their prescriptions is covered 100%. So they would never owe another penny the rest of that year. For a family or two people or more, it's $1,000 and then $3,000, which is a little bit higher than we had before, but then it goes to, you know, 100%.
And when we looked at the one lesser program, it was hard for him to explain, but it actually cost the township more money upfront, I believe he was saying.
Yes, so most of the plans to have what they call, it's where you're paying for the people that can't afford insurance. We're putting out so much per person to pay for all these other people. We're putting out so much per person to pay for all these other people. And it's a small fee, but we still are. Also on the, one of the last sheets is the employee count, and it gives everybody that's on the insurance and how much it is for medical, dental, and vision for everybody. And not everybody takes all of that. Some just take medical, some just take dental, and some take just vision. So, I went through, recalculated that sheet, and under our platinum renewal rate, where it says $13,812, I got it down to $10,481. And that's not without taxes and all that.
And our current's $13,624, correct?
Correct.
And that's basically the best we can do with lower rates. His recommendation as well as ours after looking at it. And I, I mean, the last time we were on the phone with him for at least an hour, hour and a half, I gotta say. It's very confusing, it's very confusing. They still, I still think there could be some changes. It just kind of seems like they're not sure that-
Right.
-how long these programs are going to be in place. There is one thing, there is one known factor though. It seems like every year it is going to go up regardless. I think Mr. White, Mr. Fouchet, you guys probably looked at these scenarios too before when we studied them. If we could get pretty much the same policy at a lower rate right now, I think we're doing well compared to what we looked at before when we knew we couldn't get a better plan than we had at that time. I think all three of us determined that when we looked at it, correct?
There was one thing with the Obamacare, one of the laws that he chose to go forward with. If we have someone who has a child under 18, they automatically get the medical care, but they also get dental care. Anyone under 18 has to have dental.
It's not an option.
Not an option. You cannot not have that. It doesn't matter with the vision, it's only the dental they have to have. So, like, we have someone who does not get our medical, but the child has to have our dental unless they can prove that they're getting medical through their spouse, and then the dental would go through them. I don't know if they're going to require us to get something in writing. I, there's no way of knowing right now.
Yeah, once again, in speaking with him, I still think there's going to be changes to this. I just kind of had that feeling.
On Sunday in the, in the paper, they were talking about with Obamacare and all that, that you can't go online as a small business and look up stuff, but you can go to a broker and sign up for. Are we looking into something like that?
Well, he gave us what they call mapping, which is they take our policy, what we have, and they make it to what, it fits all their rules now, but it was expensive. And it was, it was bringing all our deductibles up, and it was bringing our copays up a lot more. It was unbelievable. This policy here was-
And he's available for questioning. He spent all kinds of time on the phone with us.
Oh, yeah, I called him numerous times.
Like I said, it's very confusing, and they said the rules have all changed. And they, like, I wasn't confident that they knew all the rules. I mean, it's the way he was talking. They were, seems like they're just hit with all these right now, and they're trying to figure it out as they go. But he did say after all his work and us questioning him, this was the closest we had with reduction to what we had.
Right, and they're changing the sign-up dates, so even though our policy starts February 14th, 15th, we have to have this decision done before January 1st.
Correct.
Well, since this is, they don't even offer this anymore, and we have to change, why are we not going out to other companies and getting bids on this?
We don't have time.
Plus, I can tell you this, based on our work before, and I believe you were involved, there was nothing that came close.
Chris, I, I understand that. I understand that there's nothing that comes close, but maybe, I mean, I see that on this, you guys have chiropractic care. I, I'm a union with a big company, I don't even get chiropractic. I mean, maybe it's time to look at what's, what we're getting in this and see if we can eliminate things like that and bring the cost down.
I call every month.
I mean, can't we just call other companies and say, these other employees that we have, what can you, what can you do for us?
Tell you that, we didn't request, I'm very clear, that was part of that.
No, I understand.
No, we were hoping that Obama, our president, was accurate when he said you can keep your health care that you have.
Right.
But-
Well, you're saying this, this, they're eliminating this anyways. They're eliminating it anyway, so, I mean, that's-
Our family debt is gone.
So, we were hoping that, that he was going to follow through with that, and that would happen, and that it's not happening. Insurance companies, once they delete and take, get rid of a policy, you can no longer get that back. And there's no amount of his laws that can bring it back. And that's what we were hoping for.
Last time we did it, we looked at self, self-insuring, we looked at all different options, HMO, there was, there was no comparison.
Well, see, that's, that's where I'm stuck. We're focused on, this is what we have, this is what we need to keep, but there's got to be a way to get this cost down by maybe relooking at what we get-
It was $13,000 last year-
I understand.
-in a month, and now I brought it down to 10, four.
But you got to, here's my issue. We're paying $10,000 to insure five people every month.
No, we have one, two, three, four, five.
They get the full insurance, not just dental medical.
We have nine people on the plan.
How many get medical? I believe it's five. And we're paying $10,000 a year for a month for that.
Four, five, six.
Oh, the new, that's right, two new ones.
Seven.
And I'm, I'm just, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. And I'm going to be blunt and very honest, it's a lot of money for part-time people. We're all part-time here. It's just, it, it, it just, it bugs me that we spend that much money. It just, it eats at me. And if we have to, we have to.
What else can you do?
Go out for bids.
And that takes a long process.
And that's what we should do.
Then we don't do, then we start that next August.
I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not even comfortable with, with doing anything with this. I just got this Thursday, and it was a holiday weekend, I couldn't call anybody or do anything. So, I, I, I don't, this is a tough one.
I didn't go anywhere.
From the insurance company.
Well-
I know it's a lot of work. Insurance companies are no fun to talk to and deal with. I know, I understand that, but we're talking a lot, a lot of money. If I remember right, Karen told me last year, it's half of our taxes, half of the taxes that's brought to the township goes to paying medical benefits for these seven people. Half of the taxes.
We're a small company. We only have, what, 10 people in the office?
And what you're saying is a lot of money. I just want to make sure we're looking at every option to try and bring this down. Not a little, a lot. If you can cut it $1,000 a month, that, you know, that's eight, eight grand, that's anything.
Well, this will be cut $3,000, almost 200 a month, ballpark, right now.
What are, what are, where are you saying this?
The other price I got is $11,434.24 is the lowest.
So, you'd be $11,481.84, correct then?
Right. You see where it says under platinum, if you go to the totals, it's $13,812.06. And then the gold is $11,434.24.
Right.
I took the sheet that has everybody's name and what we're getting, and I reworked, I took away everything that's not accurate. I took out who doesn't get what.
What's your new number?
$10,481.89, correct?
Correct.
It's still $10,000 every month. It just, I understand, I know it's a lot of work to that, and I know to throw that back, but it's just so much money. And it just, and maybe we can do nothing with it. I just want to make sure we're trying. Trying everything possible.
I mean, our prescriptions are 10, 40, 80, depending on what tier we're in. Our office visits are $20. If you have to see a specialist, it's $40. If you have to go to urgent care, it's $60.
And I can tell you, those are all less than what I pay. Quite a bit less, actually.
You're comparing apples to oranges.
I understand.
In a county.
I understand.
Okay, with thousands of employees.
And I'm paying more. I mean, I'm paying more out-of-pocket.
So am I.
And you would think with more employees, you would pay less.
Twenty percent of this, and when you only make $12 an hour, 20% of my insurance is a fortune.
I do understand that. I do. But you would think with more employees, you would get a better deal, and it's, I mean, I'm, I'm paying more than that. And maybe I'm way off track, and it might be, and just like I say, it's just, it's a lot of money.
I, I know that people that are on this medical insurance have to have it because they can't get it elsewhere. And we are very grateful that yous are still offering it.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a problem. This was in my box this morning, this is the first, and I didn't until about 4:00 when Janet and Ian to sit down. I was trying to get tax bills and twenty of them in the mail, and trying to get my packet together and answering the phone when you're not here for four days, everybody wants your attention, so I didn't get a chance to look at it. I just, again, here we are, we're being pushed into a situation saying we've got to do. How long have you had this information? I mean, if you were doing this, couldn't we have had a heads-up-
Off and on for a month, but it has kept changing.
Right up to the other day when we talked on this.
And I don't see how they can try to push us into something that we've got to decide tonight. I am not ready to make this decision tonight.
Trust me when I tell you, it's not us. You try, get them on the phone, try and get, get information. They're scrambling right now as we speak. I don't know if you've had to go through it, Mr. White, but this has been a process that I don't want to go through again. Good luck getting straight answers.
See, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the data on this. This is printed 10/25/2013.
Why does print, what's-
All this information that you gave us tonight. Right on the bottom of page.
I don't know, I don't have that date on mine.
Where are you looking?
All the information that's got all the numbers of the last three or four pages.
I didn't see that.
That says you've had it since 10/24, 10/25. And I agree with Karen, here we are.
Well, this doesn't, that doesn't say that, that doesn't say that she's had it since that time. Says it was printed at that time. This information didn't come from her.
Shame on Blue Cross for holding onto it all this time, then I agree with that, if that's the case.
Is the planning to have?
I'm sorry, what?
A meeting about this?
I'd sure like a little time to look it over and understand what I'm voting for. I mean, it's a lot of money, I want to know what I'm voting on. And if it's got to be done by January 1st, then I'm thinking do a mid-month. This is kind of a, a big thing and maybe could be considered an emergency.
Well, we have to call a meeting.
A special meeting.
Absolutely. I think that's probably what we should do.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable, like I said, I'm just reading this thinking, wow, this is, I'm along to the point to say, I'm sorry that as a board member I ever got this started, because now once you've got it, it's hard to, hard to take this stuff away or to cut back on it.
I don't remember, did I give you a copy of the platinum, what it talks about, everything that's covered under this policy?
I believe so, Janet.
It says Community Blue PPO Platinum 500 Medical Coverage.
It's in here.
It is?
Yeah, effective January 1st. Well, I guess we're going to have to, we'll have to set up a, a special meeting and look into it some more and discuss it then.
Steve, I know you've said before, mid-months are kind of an issue, would you consider this important enough that we can call a special meeting?
Oh, well, if I may, yes, sure. Yes, mid-month is a different issue. Mid-month was the question of deciding things without a meeting. Special meetings, you can call those at your pleasure. Just have to follow the meetings act for proper notice.
Post a date 10 hours ahead.
That is correct. On the website and elsewhere at the clerk's office.
I'm just letting everybody know, it's a bad time of the year.
How important is your insurance? You're one of them, you're one of them that takes the insurance. I don't take the insurance. I would gladly give up the $100 each paycheck that I get. I'm trying to work something out for those of you that do need the insurance. So, if you need it, we better set a date so we can get something done. If it's important to you, we'll do it.
Whatever the board's pleasure.
Wednesdays are usually the best. Seems to be for everybody, are not available any Wednesday?
I, the only question I give is what in the next, what are we, what else are we looking at here?
Well, hopefully we'll get a clean copy with numbers because, well, what you have, what I have is a whole bunch of stuff scribbled out. And, I mean, I, I don't know what all that means, and I would like time to read through and see what we're, what we're actually voting on. That's what I'd like to see. So, I mean, even if we did it one week from now, and I don't need a lot of time, just a few days to look this thing over.
Chris, my door's always open, come on in, and we'll go over everything.
Probably, I'll probably take you up on that because I don't understand this.
I would recommend anybody to get on the phone with Mr. Bonmerito.
I can do that, no problem.
He's, that's straight from the horse's mouth.
What about Mr. Bonmerito coming here? Did you submit that? Answer our question?
I did last year, I didn't, I did this year too, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what he said.
Sitting down at a table face-to-face, I think you could get a lot more information, and we would understand it more than trying to be on the telephone.
Yeah.
Do we want to pick a date so we can make a motion on it?
Are we aiming for a Wednesday, is that what we're doing?
It's usually, seems to be the best for everybody. Jody, is it good, I know you, you got a different schedule, Wednesday good? Do the 11th? That work for you?
By Monday?
11th might get, I, go ahead, make, I don't have my schedule, I don't know.
6 o'clock, 12?
I can do 6.
6:30, what do you want later, so you guys can go home and come back or?
Ryan, do you want to pick two days? So, you have, so we have two, and you can check your schedule and let us know?
That would be great.
Say the 11th or the 18th, and Brian gets a chance to check the schedule, let us know which one. Is that all right with everybody?
11th and the 18th, you say. And then once everybody checks their schedules, we can decide.
Either one of them, 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we table the health insurance renewal until after the special meeting. Date to be determined.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? And I, I just want to clarify what's going to take place from now to then. You're going to gain the information you need on this plan.
We're trying.
Okay?
Absolutely.
All right. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Building Department Receptionist Hiring Request. Well, since that meeting's going to take place, I, I, I won't speak for you, Treasurer Adenbacher, but since that meeting's going to take place, I think after our interviews, we can make a recommendation at that time than per either meeting.
After the interviews tomorrow?
Correct. We plan on having interviews tomorrow from, I believe, 10:00 to 4:00. Is that correct, Janet? That'll be myself, Treasurer Adenbacher, and Deputy Supervisor Rintzweiglin, so we will report our findings, everybody has a copy of everybody that we're interviewing, make our recommendations at the next meeting. Anybody have a problem with that? Does anybody have a problem with that? Any other questions? I think everybody's going to copy that.
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
And just so everybody knows, we, instead of just hiring a couple, or interviewing just a couple, we decided to do that many because of both the positions that could possibly be there. And we want to make sure we get the right person. That's why we're doing the extra step. We're actually probably interviewing double what we should, just to make sure we cover all bases.
We had 65, was it Janet?
I believe that's all about right.
65 reservations.
And our list was narrowed down by a meeting and comparing notes. And these were basically the same people we had in both our, our notes. So anybody has a problem with that? Motion regarding that meeting?
I make a motion that we add the Building Department Receptionist Hiring Request to the special meeting on a date to be determined.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. 2014 meeting schedule.
Planning Commission had already looked at this at their meeting on, last Monday. So they've already approved the dates. The only one that is out of sequence is Tuesday, September 2nd.
Can you say it again? There is one change, did you say?
On the Board of Trustees, Tuesday, September 2nd because of Labor Day.
What do you want to?
I just need approval so that this can be published.
Make a motion to approve the 2014 Lennox Township meeting schedules, schedule?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. 2014 McComb Michigan Township Association, MTA dues. There's a copy. Sent an email. McComb Michigan Township Association Chairman, District Number 21, requesting $50 for township dues remitted by 1/31/2014.
Make a motion that we approve the 2014 membership dues to the McComb Michigan Township Association.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public comments? Any public comments this evening? No public comments? Need a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Media adjourned.